It's 7:00, July 18th. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
McKiever.
Here.
Myers, here. Wireball.
Potter.
Here.
Sherrick.
Here.
Spiegel.
Here.
Young.
Here.
We have no minutes to approve granting permission for visitors to speak.
My name's Pam Dunn, and I live at 491 Jump Street. And I've got a couple of things I'd like to talk about, and I'm going to be very brief. I'm here to talk about the fireworks. I'd appreciate, as I know others would, that Bucyrus would opt out of that ridiculous firework rule. I think a week of fireworks around and including July 4th would be enough. For almost 60 days, May through June, and the first week of July, for almost 60 days, soon as dusk hit, it started. Our dog hates it, she was upset all these times, and so was my husband and I. It seemed the neighbors had as good fireworks as the city did. And it is apparent to me, common courtesy does not exist. So please, for all the pets, all the military vets, and everyone, do something. Opt out of these rules that's in place, and make it so you can only set them off the first week of July. When I spoke with the mayor on the phone, he said that he would sign something into that order. And the next issue I'd like to talk about is the stray cats. Or just cats that owners let in and out, that's a problem in my neighborhood and everyone's. I called the mayor about this, and the fireworks and other things, and he says I need to come to a meeting. Well, here I am. We need to hire a city animal control. He says there's no money for that. I mean, surely we could find enough money for someone to trap cats two days a week, at least. You need one day to set the traps, and you need one day to check the traps. We used to have an animal control, and we need one again. I'm very tired of them in my six-foot fenced-in backyard daily, using my numerous flowerbeds and my garden as their own. And I'm also tired of peeing on my porch, and tearing up my carpet that the forensist put down for me on my porch. I'm up to here. It's been going on a long time. And most of the people I've talked to are handling it in their own ways, different methods, you know? But most of them are saying by any means necessary. I don't want to do that, but if we can't find a solution to this, I might have to go to that. And it's a little upsetting to me that when I call to speak to the mayor, he tells me that I need to come to the meetings. Well, maybe it is better if the public comes and tells you what's on their mind for themselves. I thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Vicki DeShawn, 1108 Hillcrest Drive, Bucyrus. At the July 5th, 2023 council meeting, I questioned the passage, as emergencies, of ordinance numbers 27, 2023, and 28, 2023, for the $2 million-plus monies to be received from the Crawford County Commissioners for three waterline projects, and reminded council of the following. At the June 22nd, 2023 Service Committee meeting, Service Safety Director Wagner stated that the city will pay for each waterline project invoice upfront, forward invoice copies to the county commissioners, who will then have a check written the same month and sent to the city. The opening of bids for the Stetson Road and State Route 602 waterline project were scheduled for July 20th, 2023, and, since it is safe to assume that an invoice would not be received by the city before July 31st, these ordinances should be passed as non-emergencies, with the first reading on July 5th, second reading on July 18th, and final reading on July 31st. Throughout the discussion, Mayor Reeser vehemently stated the following. One, we want to get this buttoned down before we go out to bid. Two, I think it's important that we do this as an emergency. Three, we want to get all these agreements put together before they go out to bid in two weeks. Four, the commissioners need the agreement. Five, we need the agreement. Six, let's get the agreement done. Seven, what is the benefit of three readings? Seven, we've got this money. Nine, we've got this huge project. Ten, it's not a small deal. Eleven, we've worked very hard on it. Twelve, we want to get it going. Thirteen, we want to get it behind us. Fourteen, I just don't want to jeopardize this. And fifteen, it's very, very important. Wireball then stated in part, and I quote, "The way I see it, the county is giving us this money, basically, to do this work. And before we have an agreement, you want to know where that money is going to be, and that it's going to be in a fund that's going to be appropriated for what you want it for." So before the city and the county has an agreement, they would like, probably, to see that we have it in this fund waiting. Since the first project had already gone out to bid, I stated to Wireball, "Well, don't you think you'd like to have an agreement signed before you go out to bid for the project?" He responded, "We will." And I responded, "No, you're not," and then questioned if an agreement had been signed. Reeser asked interim law director Gernert if there was an agreement, and Gernert responded, "Yeah." I asked Gernert if the agreement was signed, and Gernert responded, "Yeah." The next day, on July 6th, I went to the county commissioner's office, spoke with Annie, and was told the following. The agreement, as referred to in Resolution Number 219-2023, passed by council on June 22nd, 2023, is actually an addendum. The addendum was emailed by the commissioner's office to the city on June 22nd, 2023, for signing and return. The commissioners were still waning on the signed addendum from the city. The commissioners could not proceed with their paperwork until the city supplied them with the signed addendum. And the creation of the subparagraph "category line items" by the city does not have to be done before the addendum is signed, but needs to be in place before the county will reimburse the city for the first invoice copy received. I then left the commissioner's office, met with Service Safety Director Wagner at City Hall, and asked if he had signed the addendum. He said he was sure he had. I asked for a copy of the signed document, and he said he was unable to locate it, and suggested I check with Annie at the commissioner's office. I informed him that I had just come from the scene, Annie, who informed me that they were still waiting for the signed addendum from the city. I then requested a copy of the unsigned addendum from Wagner, which I was given. Wagner stated he would sign the addendum and get it to the commissioner's office yet that day. I reminded him that Gernert also had to sign the addendum, approving it as to form. Because, as the mayor stated, among other things, that this project is very, very important, and he doesn't want to jeopardize it, I do not understand why, then, the administration sat on the addendum for two weeks. I really have to wonder how much longer they would have sat on it had someone not checked into the matter. The addendum was finally signed on July 6th, 2023, by both the city and county commissioners. Thank you.
Anybody else?
John Rostesh, Planning and Zoning Administrator for the city. Just wanted to give an update on the Omni Fiber installation project, and just let people know what's going on with that. Right now, they're putting in all the conduit underground right now, so that's what they're working on. Their first week here in Bucyrus, there were some issues that needed to be worked out, how they were managing the dirt when they piled it up. They had a pile on the sidewalk. We said, "No, you can't do that." They had piles just in the grass, so when they go to fill the hole back in, now they got all the dirt in the grass, and they're out there having to rake. We said, "Hey, let's get some tarps, let's put the dirt on the tarps, and so let's just do a much neater job." Well, Omni Fiber really took that to heart, because they booted that crew right out of here. That crew's no longer in town, and they brought in a whole different crew, several crews that they brought in. And they're doing a much better job. They're much neater. They're trying to be much more conscientious about the work that they're doing, and trying to make sure that they get things buttoned up on the weekends, and that they don't have a lot of open holes around. Now, this week's been a little challenging, because the subcontractor has brought more crews into town to try to get more work done. Obviously, their goal is to get the whole city done as soon as possible, so they brought in more crews. And unfortunately, they've left some holes open a few days longer than what we would like to see. So we did talk about that today, and try to get those issues addressed. And I think you'll see the holes come, you know, they'll open up the holes to run the lines, but then those will get filled back in, and they'll put the seed and straw down and get it looking real neat once they're done. That'll happen faster than what's occurred this week. But overall, I believe that they're trying very hard to be accommodating and move as fast as they can, as neat as they can, and trying to be very conscientious of the homeowners, the people traveling through the city. We had some issues where they were blocking off traffic on the side streets, completely blocking, and we've tried to address those, and hopefully those are going to get addressed, and they'll still allow access. So we're doing our best to try to make sure this runs as smooth as we can for our community. Do you have questions?
I have a suggestion, actually, whether it's to you or to the mayor. In your next communication with them, maybe suggest them traffic safety cones where their vehicles are on the streets, whether they're parked, you know, at a good distance off to the side in a parking place, or they've had a trailer they're pulling around that they kind of leave sticking pretty far out of the street. I think some traffic cones, I know Spring Street and Kaler were the two areas that I saw that that would have been real beneficial.
Yeah, much like gas company do, that's when they park their trucks, they put a cone out, yeah.
Yeah, because a lot of the vehicles they're using aren't marked, and so it looks like there's some dude who lives there, you know, has his car parked out.
Yeah, that's true.
Type of a deal, so maybe some kinds would bring some awareness to that.
Yeah, I'll definitely mention that to them. Any other questions or concerns from council? If anybody at home has any questions or concerns, feel free to call us up at the city, or on our city website, we have a broadband page that you can go to, and it has Omni Fiber's contact information. You can contact them directly. But please know, we're doing all we can to try to make sure this runs as smoothly for you and for everybody involved, so I appreciate your patience. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I got one more.
This is for Plating Committee. I would like Plating Committee to start looking at housing and different types of housing for Bucyrus, maybe look at accessory dwelling units. So if we could just generally put housing in your committee, I would appreciate that greatly. Thank you.
All right.
Madam President.
Yes.
Would you like me to refer to that?
That would be nice.
I'll second that referral of housing and accessory dwellings. And can we refer the fireworks and issues?
Let her vote on this one, then I was going to bring that up the same way.
All right, so I have a motion by Mr. McKiever, a second by Ms. Sherrick, for the housing issues in Bucyrus to Plating. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And I'll do a motion for the fireworks, and we'll go ahead and throw the P lines in. Would that be health and safety?
Both of them, I would say health and safety. I'll second that.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Anything else? All right. Do we have any communications or petitions?
No, I do not.
Standing Committee reports, Plating?
Well, I had nothing until it was suggested about public housing. That's all I have.
Public lands and buildings?
Nothing at this time.
Health and safety?
No report.
Finance?
No report.
Economic development?
No report.
Service?
The only thing I want to say is our case will be here on Thursday for a committee meeting. They're going to do some information on the wastewater. So other than that, no report.
Traffic Commission?
No report, but we have a meeting tomorrow at 1:30. Council chambers, if anybody would like to attend.
I have a motion to accept the report as presented collectively.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. McKiever. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Report to city officers, Mr. Mayor.
I have no formal report except to say that the city of Bucyrus is hiring. So Greg, if you get tired of selling tires...
I'm older than you are, Jeff.
Come on. So we're hiring two positions. Utility office downstairs, you work with customers coming in, setting up accounts, and making people feel good to go on water and sewer and all that stuff. And the other positions are, we're hiring back of the garbage truck, and we're short several positions there, so love to have you apply. If you come up to the mayor's office, we have information on it, applications, and you also can find these online, too. Did I miss anything, John?
No, I think you did.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Madam President.
Do we have a report from Mr. Wagner?
No, no report for Jeff tonight.
Mr. Gernert?
The only thing I have is the last pending, there's that Bank House versus City of Bucyrus, and Bryz and Selco, that's been dismissed by the court, so no currently pending litigation.
That's good news. All right, Ms. Lewis?
No report.
You have before you the, I'm sorry.
Was that considered, because we lost $1,000 a month in court on that, was that considered a frivolous lawsuit that the plaintiff could be on the hook for?
What he cost the city?
Probably not, no.
Okay. Well, should we consider that as possibly a countersuit to regain the money that we lost by not being able to lease the towers?
I hadn't contemplated that, but...
Okay, please contemplate it. Thank you.
You have in the packet the report from the treasurer. May I have a motion to accept and file?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKiever, a second by Mr. Potter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We also have, we have a report from the police chief, I don't believe there was one. We have a report in there from Chief Schwemle for the fire and EMS, and we'll do them separate, so.
I'll make a motion to accept and file.
I'll second.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. Spiegel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We also have the May 2023 med account.
I'll make a motion to accept and file that as well.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. Spiegel. All those in favor?
Nope, Mr. Young.
Sorry. A second by Mr. Young. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to accept city officer's reports as presented, which basically is just going to be Mr. Gernert?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. McKiever. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Granting permission for visitors to speak on standing of special committees and the city officer reports. Seeing none, consideration of proposed legislation for the first time.
Proposed ordinance 29-2023, amending and supplementing ordinance number 66-2022, being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2023, by appropriating from unappropriated sewage disposal funds the sum of $275 to the contractual services line item within the sewers and drains category within the sewage disposal subparagraph, and finally appropriating from unappropriated solid waste management funds the sum of $825 to the contractual services line item within the solid waste category within the solid waste management subparagraph, and declaring an emergency. Proposed ordinance 30-2023, amending and supplementing ordinance number 66-2022, being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2023, by decreasing the current balance in the other uses line item by $5,000 within the general government category within the FEMA 2023-539-North Lane Street subparagraph with the FEMA 2023-539-North Lane Street Fund, and increasing the current balance in the materials and supplies line item by $5,000 within lands and buildings category within the Program 7 general government subparagraph within the general fund, and declaring an emergency. And finally, resolution, oh, not finally. That one's for later. Hold on, these are out of order. Finally, resolution, proposed resolution 221-2023. Thank you. Authorizing and directing the service safety director on behalf of the city of Bucyrus, Ohio, to enter into an agreement with the Bucyrus Kiwanis Club to allocate the responsibilities of each party as it pertains to the splash pad installed at Allmiller Park.
I have a motion to accept this as a first reading.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKiever, a second by Mr. Spiegel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Granting permission for the general public to speak on legislation that's been read for the first time. Seeing none. Consideration of legislation read for the final time.
Proposed resolution 217-2023, authorizing and directing the public service safety director of the city of Bucyrus, Ohio, to ban all vehicular traffic, including bicycles and skateboards, except authorized emergency personnel, for the 2023 Bucyrus Brewers Festival, according to the schedule set forth herein. Further, authorizing and directing the chief of police to make necessary arrangements for the rerouting of traffic on federal, state, and local highways and roadways.
May I have a motion to accept this as the final reading?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. McKiever. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Granting permission for visitors to speak on legislation that's been read for the final time. Seeing none. Referring back to originating committee, proposed ordinance 29-2023 appropriations, refer back to finance. Proposed ordinance 30-2023 transfers, refer back to finance. Proposed resolution 217-2023, Bratwurst Festival, street closures, refer back to health and safety, and proposed resolution 221-2023, refer back to public lands and buildings. Committee report on pending legislation, finance.
Finance is favorable to proposed ordinance 29-2023, appropriations, and finance is favorable to proposed ordinance 30-2023, transfers.
Health and safety?
Health and safety is favorable to proposed resolution 217-2023, the Bratwurst Festival street closures.
Public lands and buildings?
Public lands and buildings is favorable to propose the resolution 221-2023 splash pad Kiwanis agreement.
Further consideration of pending legislation, ordinance 29-2023 appropriations. For the second and third readings of the proposed ordinance 29-2023, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKiever, a second by Mr. Spiegel.
McKiever.
Yes.
Spiegel.
Yes.
Young.
Yes.
Myers, yes. Wireball.
Yes.
Potter.
Yes.
Sherrick.
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance, sorry, 29-2023?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Young, second by Mr. McKiever.
Young.
Yes.
McKiever.
Yes.
Myers, yes. Wireball.
Yes.
Potter.
Yes.
Sherrick.
Yes.
Spiegel.
Yes.
Ordinance 29-2023 is duly adopted. Ordinance 30-2023 transfers, for the second and third readings of proposed ordinance 30-2023, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Spiegel, a second by Mr. Potter.
Spiegel.
Yes.
Potter.
Yes.
Sherrick.
Yes.
Young.
Yes.
McKiever.
Yes.
Myers, yes. Wireball.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 30-2023?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKiever, a second by Mr. Young.
McKiever.
Yes.
Young.
Yes.
Myers, yes. Wireball.
Yes.
Potter.
Yes.
Sherrick.
Yes.
Spiegel.
Yes.
Ordinance 30-2023 is duly adopted. Resolution...
Madam President, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
With the ethics stuff, anytime we were a part of something, we weren't supposed to vote on it. Should Mr. Myers be...
Already been discussed in previous years, and it was fine with, at that time. But I'll let our wall director answer, I'm sorry.
Well, so it's not a financial gain shutting down the streets, but it's not like Mr. Myers has a financial gain, but even if he abstained, it would be five-sevenths tonight.
Right. I just didn't want us to do something and get in trouble.
Mr. Myers, will you please abstain?
Sure.
Sorry, I just, I was looking at it going, you know, because...
I hadn't contemplated it, so I'm just trying to think through things on the fly, but...
Like, I don't have any problem with it, I just didn't want anybody else to have a problem.
So you would call for a revote? Revote?
We haven't voted yet.
We haven't voted. I stopped it beforehand, that's why, that's why I stopped where I did. I didn't want us to...
Yeah, that's fine. Mr. Myers can abstain from that.
Sorry.
No, no good. Thank you.
I was opinioned.
Resolution 217-2023, Bratwurst Festival street closures.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick to adopt.
I'll second.
I have a second by Mr. McKiever.
Sherrick.
Yes.
McKiever.
Yes.
Myers abstains. Wireball. Potter.
Yes.
Spiegel.
Yes.
Young.
Yes.
Resolution 217-2023 is duly adopted. Do we have any old or unfinished business?
The only thing I have is still about the motorized vehicles, because today I saw another...
We have issued tickets.
There's a golf cart that just went down Poplar. No license plate.
Golf carts need to be licensed, yeah.
It's not licensed.
Right, it's not.
Good.
The mini bike I saw today on Poplar was not licensed.
And I...
Probably needs to be licensed.
And so, is there this motorized, whatever you want to call it, I don't know, but it's a, I mean, the gentleman was no higher than this off the road, his head. It was one of, it had the white tires, and he, you know, not even really abiding by the, but I'm not blaming the police, because they can't be everywhere with 90-some miles of road. I'm just saying, there's, nobody is...
How many accidents have they caused?
I'm trying to, just trying to prevent the accident, because that person...
Gas prices are through the roof, man, just let them live.
But if it's a vehicle that has to have a license, it did not have a license.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
Couple things. First off, sorry, Ms. Sherrick, I was daydreaming on the Bratwurst Festival. But, yeah, so by and large, if they have to be licensed, they have to be licensed. But we also pull over probably 75% of the tickets on Wednesday morning are unlicensed drivers, or expired tags, or expired registration. So the police department, I believe, is doing a diligent job. the traffic laws, because regardless of what you're driving, you have to follow the traffic laws.
That is correct.
By and large, golf carts have to be licensed, most bicycles have to be licensed, so we're working on it, and it's a work in progress, because you could pass a law, and then tomorrow we could have a different thing that now has a license. Most of the pedal motor scooters like Lime, or I forget, Bird, Wire, whatever the things are, those don't really have any laws, but I think the police, one of the police's goals is to keep them off of the sidewalk and into the street following traffic laws. So we have been working on it, and it's something that the chief of police and I have been discussing on a routine basis, and we don't disagree, but there are a lot of different moving parts.
I appreciate the feedback.
I think there's a lot of, like, different variations of those kind of vehicles now.
Oh, for sure.
That it would be really hard to micromanage each individual one.
Yeah, I'm not asking to micromanage, I'm just saying, people, especially you get senior citizens, and my dad is 91, he does not react as quick.
Absolutely.
And somebody not watching where they're going, and they're not paying attention, and he can't see them.
No, we have seen the first wave of tickets on, because I think a lot of these people thought that there was no real regulations, and so I have started prosecuting those tickets on people on these stand-up scooters, on these motors, or bicycles with gas engines or electric engines that aren't following traffic laws. And I think that's our first thing, is to obey the laws of the land.
I appreciate that.
But it's a...
That's fine.
Because you can define them or change them.
Different subject. What's the status of our clerk? You know, the ones that aren't on, that ad hoc committee does not know what's going on with it, so it'd be nice to know.
Go ahead, Aaron, if you want to.
We are interviewing someone else on Thursday prior to the city council meeting, or the committee meetings. So we're still working on it. Definitely in the works, still.
It'd be nice to keep us informed on it.
Yes.
Has there been a handful of applicants that just weren't?
Wouldn't it?
We've had two applicants, and one we couldn't afford.
Fair enough.
Good enough.
All right. Chairmans of committees, if you would, get your agendas into the office if you have anything you want planned for the meeting on Thursday. Susan asked, with her being, working two jobs up here, if you could get that into her ASAP, that would be helpful.
Madam President?
Yes.
Since Arcadia's is going to have representatives come from Cleveland, and different areas, we're asking if we could have them leave first, if at all possible? Thank you.
That would be service, correct?